So I'm gonna call us to order at 6:01 or whatever the clock says. And I am gonna ask for a nomination for board chair.
I'd like to nominate our current board chair, Lynn.
Lots of seconds, thank you. Any discussion or other nominations? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
Thank you.
Turn it over to them.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Are we okay, we're just missing Erin and Kelly. Are we okay to move forward to do vice chair, the other positions?
My feeling is I'd like to have the full board here for other positions. And in the past, we have delayed having the other positions filled. Because we really haven't had discussion about it. And I'm not advocating one thing or another. I'm just putting it out there that there's...
I don't think Kelly's gonna be here, though, on the 17th. That was part of why we had the discussion, I think, at the mini-retreat on the equity position. Right?
I don't know. We're missing two.
So you're saying, is Kelly coming tonight?
No.
Okay, but Erin is.
I'm not sure if Erin's coming tonight because of her little guy.
I don't know if she's communicated it. I don't know that she's coming or not coming. But she has a pretty sick kid at home. And two nights ago, like, came like half... She tried really hard. So I don't know if Erin will make it or not. I know her son's been really needing her.
I just think as long as we have our fearless leader in place. But I defer to the rest of the board.
Is the will of the board?
I think it has to happen today. It doesn't matter what order we do it in, in my opinion.
I think statute says you have to elect the chair and clerk at the next meeting after the election.
Yeah, it has to happen today.
The chair and the clerk.
Yep.
She's talking about the vice chair, too.
I would say we just do it all today.
Is that the will? Okay. Okay. In that case, I will entertain a nomination for the vice chair. Barbara? Is there a second?
I would second.
Discussion?
Does Jeff want the job?
I thought his face kinda looked like he'd accept the job. A lot of a little look.
Thank you. So I am happy to defer to another person if there is strong interest in this position.
Even we interested?
Well, we would need a new clerk.
Do we know if...
Is there another nomination?
Do we know if Erin or Kelly are interested in those positions?
That's why I was saying, see, I thought that our reorganization was March 17th. And I totally missed this. And typically, there... This is never... I'm sorry, this is a little bit of a sidebar conversation. But there's never a comfortable process about this. And typically, what does happen is there are many little sidebar conversations where people kind of have talked one-on-one, three people or whatever, and get a sense of what people feel about their ability to serve in the different roles, or interest in serving in different roles. And somebody might have been clerk for a while, and they're really tired of going and looking at checks or whatever it might be. And then somebody else says, hey, I really wanna learn that job, or whatever. So...
We don't know that we're gonna have all 12 members next time.
No, I understand that.
So I think that...
I feel fairly confident if Erin wanted the position, she would've said that she would want it.
I feel confident Erin would've said something to us on Monday.
I wonder, and I don't know what...
And I don't know about Kelly, though. But I don't think Kelly can be at the next meeting, regardless, right?
Okay, are there any other nominations for chair? I'm giving up already. For vice chair. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
You know what this means. We, I will entertain a nomination for a clerk.
I'd like to nominate Barbara Martin for clerk.
I, we need a camera to get the expressions on these faces. You like that job?
Oh, yeah.
Oh! Excellent.
I have a lot to learn, but thank you.
It'll take hours and hours for you to train you.
Wait, we got a second, right? We get a second?
Yeah.
Any discussion?
You're gonna have to fight Barbara, 'cause she wants it. You want it?
No, I'm seconding it.
I was over here whispering that I was gonna nominate her for vice chair. So make it lively.
And that's historically been a Shelburne or Charlotte position anyway, given the location of central office and the need to be there.
It's a great way to kind of learn about how the system works.
It is. You get a whole other segment, the full picture, really, of what our work is about, in some respects, at least in terms of funding, because you need to see where you're starting and going.
That's great.
And do some good detail. And the staff is great.
I can see central office staff.
I never see you folks. I go, I see Jean, thankfully. I see Jean, but...
Oh, you get to see Jean? Never mind, I want the job now.
I get to see Jean every couple of weeks. It's very nice.
I'm joking. I don't wanna drive her all the way. Hold on.
Maybe with my smile, I did...
Oh, she's giving you the endorsement, right?
Yeah, it's just your smile.
We don't have to vote. Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Barbara. Okay, assistant clerk.
Who did it?
I'm not Jocelyn.
Kelly actually was a clerk before.
Let's make her do it again.
Have a nominee, can we nominate?
Oh, I'd like to nominate...
What does assistant clerk do? Yeah.
Simply steps in when the clerk is unavailable.
First runner-up. That's what it is, first runner-up.
So I have a question, which is, I mean, it's... I would not mind doing that, because I know the routine and I'm relatively close by. But I don't know if that's even feasible to be an assistant clerk when you're holding another office.
The other thing is that I don't think that assistant clerk is a required position. So you could just leave that for now. And then if it turns out that Barbara's traveling a lot, or there's a reason for it, we can always, at that, it'll give us time to see if Kelly's willing to continue to do that.
Okay, we can hold that nomination. And you, and actually, you and Kelly actually maybe could discuss it and figure out, okay.
But I would advocate a week to that nobody holds two offices. Spread that. Spread the burden.
Just wants to come hang out with me more. So we'll tail that nomination. Do I, now, this is the good stuff. Do I have a motion to appoint Jed Graff treasurer?
So who?
Second. No discussion needed. How's that? Oh, Jed. Who is Jed?
Jed was on the Shelburne Board for...
No, 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 what was his Olympic glory?
He was like...
1960 backstroke.
Yeah, Olympic backstroke, gold medalist from Princeton University. He's very tall.
He's very tall. He was the seat, he was on...
Why we want him in the position?
He was on the Shelburne Board for a long time. And he was chair of CSSU for a long time. He never left. Really, I don't think he did.
Well, the treasurer is really in charge of approving anything, the money that goes in and out. So they, they're, you have to sign everything that goes in and out.
As a proxy for the board, or?
Well, the...
It's for the district.
Yeah, it's for the district.
But it's not a board member.
Actually, my question here is that we voted this on Monday. So I'm not exactly sure why we're voting it tonight.
I don't know either. It might just be that Sandy defaulted it on this. Did we appoint Joan?
This was a vote, actually, that's an interesting question. That was, he was a vote... If this happened on Monday, it was a vote of the district. It wasn't a vote of the board. So I don't think it's appropriate for it to be on this agenda.
All right, I'm just gonna note that I'm pretty sure that we did not appoint Joan Lenis on Monday night. I'm pretty sure.
We did not, we did not, that's true.
So do we need to appoint her?
Why don't we go, that would be, let's go ahead and do that.
All right, do I have a motion to appoint Joan Lenis?
But is it the board, or is it the district?
It's probably the district, but the district's not gonna be together again for another year. So perhaps the board could act in this situation.
In the capacity, yes.
You sure we didn't do Joan on Monday?
No, we did Dave, and we did Jed.
You need a motion to...
Approve the appointment of Joan Lenis as assistant treasurer.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? And we'll get, maybe in, maybe in the poll report, we could get just a clarification of what the treasurer of the district does.
Sure.
That would be good. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, 3.0 adjustments to the agenda. I don't have any. Does anyone have any? Okay.
I would just like to offer, before we move on, appreciation to you, Lynn, for all that you have done over the last two years. And certainly, one of the things that I've learned the longer that I'm on this board is that there's a lot of work that you're doing, but we're not... You're constantly reading and doing research and making certain that things are being done and working with Elaine and with other administrative staff. You do an incredible amount of work as chair. And I know it's safe to say that we all really appreciate what you are doing.
Thank you.
In this job, we're fortunate to have you.
Thank you. It's a team effort. It's a team effort here.
Is this where we get a two-minute celebration for last night's results?
We're gonna celebrate in a minute. We gotta celebrate, the first thing we have to celebrate, and I was gonna do, like, have everybody go around and do some embarrassing stories so that Ken would really remember who we were. But we'll save that maybe to the retreat. I thought it would be just good to go around and welcome Ken, and also introduce ourselves to Ken, and just kind of get, so, I mean, he's been at all of our meetings, our budget meetings, but maybe just talk a little bit about how long you've been on the board, if you have kids in the school still, or... And Ray, before you take that bite, we're gonna start with you.
I've introduced myself already. Ray Mayner here from Heinsburg. And I think I'm on my second year, second and third-year sentence in the school. Brendan from Williston. I don't remember where I joined the board. I have two kids in the school district, eight and six.
Jocelyn Adams, I'm from Williston. I've been on the board for two years. And I have a kiddo in kindergarten and a kiddo in pre-K at Allenbrook.
Barbara Martin, we've met. I have two kids, ninth and eighth, right up. And I've been, this is my second year, I think.
Yep. The three of them, you're going into your third. Your third year.
Oh, yeah, we're going into our third year.
It's like the first.
You're over here saying all these treasurer, not for their clerk.
Welcome, I'm Jeff Morton. I'm from Charlotte. I have two children, a daughter in 11th grade and a second daughter in 8th grade at Charlotte Central.
Jean Jensen, COO. My kids were alums of CSSU, actually, at the time. So they're both graduates from here. And I was a long-time CVU board member and chair before I lucked into the best job ever, about two and a half years ago.
Hi, Ken, I'm Megan Roy. I'm the Director of Student Support Services, sitting here in Elaine's place for the next couple of weeks. But I don't live in the district, so... But I do have...
But you wish you did.
I totally wish I did. I do wish I did. I have a nine and a 12-year-old in schools. Neighborhood community.
Yeah.
I'm Lynn Johnick from Charlotte. I've been on the CVSD Board for almost three years. I took over for Mark when he left the position and went into the, went to the other side. I have three kids, they've all gone through CCS, CVU, and are almost out of college. I was on the CVU Board before that and the CCS Board. But CVSD.
I'm Russ Cafrey. I am entering my 14th year on various iterations of the Board, Shelburne. My kids are 2011 and 2013 graduates of CVU.
I'm Colleen McKinnon, and I had a son who's a graduate of the district, and he's been out for a while.
Tell him how long you've been on the board.
It's embarrassing. 25 years.
Wow. We can have a big party. Oh, yeah.
I just hit the quarter-century.
I think Brendan's taking us all out tonight, so.
That's what committee meeting agenda is.
And it's always changing. It's always learning.
Hi. I'm so glad to know who that person was, who was coming to every meeting. That one person. I'm Angela Arseneau, and this is my second year. I'm from Williston. I have a daughter who is in 6th grade and a son in 4th.
Bonnie Birdsall, I'm Director of Digital Learning and Communications for the district. I have two children that went through SCS and CVU, who are now moved on. And this is my 26th year working in the district in different capacities, but second year in this role.
Mark McDermott, Director of Human Resources and whatever else this thing says. I was on the board in Charlotte and then a couple of years ago. I'm a cautionary tale. This is what happens when you start.
It's very nice to meet you all.
Welcome. You wanted to say a little bit about...
Sure. So, Ken Scott, I have a son who's in pre-K and a daughter who's in 1st grade. We moved here, it's almost two and a half years ago, for my children, mostly, and to get here before my daughter started kindergarten. So she started kindergarten at SCS. So we've been here, I'd say, a little over two years now, so...
Where'd you come from?
Came from Southern California.
Oh, my.
We did not move here for a job. We did not move here, all our family is in Southern California. We, I was just thinking on the way here, about three years ago, picked Vermont, came and visited in May, three years ago. And then my wife came back and checked schools and felt very comfortable with SCS, and that's where we landed. So we came here for the schools. So this kind of, I wasn't looking, I had never entered my mind before I had a conversation with Dave about this. So it wasn't part of a big plan, but the schools were a very important reason of why we came here. So this kind of just fit very nicely with what we think is important.
That's a neat show.
That's a neat story. Bonnie, that's a really neat story. Let's highlight our new... Well, welcome. We're thrilled to have you. We're a really serious, serious board, as you can tell. Now we can have our two minutes of celebration. And can I start? I just wanna say thank you to everyone, to the board members, for your time and energy, getting out there and talking about everything that Bonnie and Jean put together, the presentations, the information on the websites. Oh, my God, I had people quoting the website to me. So people, people were looking at it, the efforts for the bond, for the budget, the buses. Was, was really unbelievable. The presentations, I sent so many people to your presentation, actually, 'cause there were a lot of questions about special education. Just, I, thank you. It feels, I told somebody, someone from Vermont Digger called me today. I think we were the only district that she was talking about that where the bond and the budget both passed. And she said, well, what do you think? And I said, I think it holds really promising things for our future, that we have communities that support, collectively support our schools. So thank you so much. Thank you, thank you. We could not do this without, without you. Thank you. Thank you for making us look good.
Like, yeah, I got several compliments on the fire that came out last week. The only suggestion I had was that it come out earlier because of early voting. A lot of people had cast their votes before they seen...
Off of that, I was told by multiple people, it was the clearest it's ever been.
Yeah, no, it was an excellent, excellent job.
I'd like to add something, too. Special thanks to the administration for working hard. We, you know, each time we told them to go back and revisit some, you know, some numbers and make sure that, you know, they are, you know, they, they meet our expectation. And they, I think they did a tremendous job. And, you know, back to what you said, they make us look good, 'cause they worked hard to do that. And I think they do that every day.
Speaking of looking good, next time, next year, you guys all get to be in the videos, 'cause I have way too many videos. No, Bonnie and I were saying that if, someone would've had to work hard to not be informed, right? Because there was so much out there. So that, that made me feel more comfortable, 'cause we've always struggled, this is the, well, two things. This is the year we eliminated the Budget Buddy, because we just weren't finding that, the committee at least, was not finding that to be useful. And so we worked hard to come up with some other ways of outreach. And luckily, Bonnie never tires. And every day she was on me with, okay, time for a video, time for this, time for that. And we would get it done. So it was great teamwork with Bonnie to get, get stuff out there. But there was just so much material, I mean, that it was, I thought it was pretty good. But, come on, two and a half to one on a bond vote on the first try? I don't think I've ever seen that.
Still saying, I noticed that there was 200 and some odd extra votes on that bond vote over this, the school budget.
Over the budget.
So there were some, 200 and something people voted no on the school budget, but were like, yes, this bond makes sense.
I wonder which town they lived in.
Or, and there were some ballots where people just voted for the bond, and they didn't vote for the other things, too.
True.
Oh, really?
Yeah, true.
Fascinating. That's another party we could have, a watch party with the campaigns. All right, thank you. Okay, we're on to 4.0, discussions. 4.1, FY19 fiscal audit. Jean, do you wanna?
It's only 105 pages long, any questions? No, I included, you know, a sort of pre-read to let you know that the, the auditors gave us a very clean audit. No, no concerns that raised to the level of a concern on an audit. They had some suggestions which we're following up on, but otherwise, you know, the finance team at Central Office worked really hard, and they work really hard every day. But to get a good, clean audit like that was awesome, so...
Sorry, I didn't mean to...
Yep. No, I was gonna say, I was just gonna fill in that the, the finance team got to meet with the auditors, to telecon with them last month to go through.
Yeah, I was really interested in, so I sit through different types of audits fairly regularly, and I've had the opportunity to do this once the last four years, I think. And it was really cool listening to the auditors, 'cause a lot of the things that we needed to improve upon isn't significant in the sense that we're violating our own policies that we wrote. So all we have to do is fix our policies.
Proceed.
Procedure, sorry. So our, our accounting practices and how we're managing, you know, this business is, in my opinion, done very clean and outstanding.
So our auditor, Ron Smith, who does, I'd say, probably the majority of the audits in the, school audits in the state, told the committee that CVSD is probably in the best financial shape of any school district in Murmott. And that's not just controls, but also our fund balance is the right amount, and things are adding up right. So that was, that was a really nice compliment to the team, so... So we need to have this approved by the board by the end of March to send to the state. So this, this is the time for the discussion, and it'll be on action in two weeks.
On the 17th?
Yep. Seriously, anybody have any questions?
The only question I have is, was there anything that they recommended that surprised you in any way, Jean, or anything that, that came up that you might not have anticipated? Or did it all really fall into place as you might have expected?
Well, in the audit itself, there was, in the risk management section, which is one I care about a lot, a recommendation to look at how we collateralize some of the funds that we have, especially the QSCAB accounts, which is our bonding. Heinsburg and Charlotte were part of a program where we, basically instead, it's like a reverse bond, but we put money aside, and at the end of 20 years, we, we pay it back. So we have this escalating bank account that's gotten big enough that we should worry about collateralizing it. And that was really the only thing in the audit. In the management letter, which is, as Brendan was saying, it's like, your audit is fine, but we've noticed a few things you might wanna think about. They had interesting things. They said, well, you're not following your own procedures, you should make your procedures less tight. And it's things like, it's, it's, our procedure is you get permission through a requisition to spend money. It gets approved by the appropriate department head, and then you go buy it, and then you turn your invoice in, and the invoice is approved, and someone gets paid. Well, that works fine when you're buying a serious thing. When you're on a business trip and you go to Chipotle's for lunch, you're really not gonna go through that for that. But our procedure says, you get a requisition, you get approval, da-da-da-da-da-da. So that's what we're, the one thing we're working on, is like, how can we rewrite the procedure to make reasonable exceptions without losing the internal controls that we have in place? So those are the two things. Thanks for asking.
Jean?
Yeah.
How long have these guys been doing it? I know it's this, this is second of a...
It's their second, right.
Is it their second go-around with that?
Yes, yes. So I think that we'll, we'll put it out for, for the next year after. It was, it was very handy to, their first three-year break came just as Bob and I transitioned. So we decided that was not one more change we needed, so we just went with the second, but, but it's time for another.
Yeah, I think we've had the previous audit for quite a while.
Yes.
Part of the reason for the change was just a good idea every now and then to have somebody else come in, you know, perhaps take a different look at things. And I'm not saying that we need to make a change after this contract, so, but it's good to look at it.
Right, yep, I agree.
Any other questions? Okay, so we will approve this March 17th. It'll be on the consent agenda on the 17th. Okay, 4.2, diversity equity coordinator position. So this is a continuation of a discussion that we kind of had prematurely at our mini-retreat. And it was, it was a very robust discussion. I think what administration, the board's collective response to that initial discussion was to ask the administration to go back and look at the position again. There was a concern about, could the scope of the job description actually be accomplished within the given parameters that were being proposed? And there was a concern about, and I think these, Barbara, I think these were your words, but somebody else may have talked about feet in two buckets. That's what sticks in my mind, that there, that this, there is desire to see this as a focused position. So the plan at the end of that meeting was to come back at this meeting and hear from the administration again, what their recommendations, or if there were change in the recommendations. And I believe everybody has the link to the job description. It was in the...
Yep, sure. So we thought that we would start by just kind of walking us back a little bit, when we sort of jumped into the conversation last time, because there was, there were some HR-related needs to have it quickly. So it did, it caused us to intertwine the HR part of the conversation with the conversation about what our actual proposal was and intent. So we thought we'd just give a quick overview of what were propos, what we were proposing and why, and then our reaction to the conversation that you all had last time, and kind of what we're proposing now. So, and some of this is a repeat, 'cause we, we did talk about it. But as you all know, we are in the middle of an equity audit that is designed to be kind of rolled out to the board in parts. In, in the fall, there was the professional development component. Obviously, Elaine's not here, but there, the additional components will come from there. And it's not finished yet. But there are some conclusions that we've been able to come to just based on what we've gathered so far. And the two main ones are, there's a critical need for us to develop kind of a cohesive professional development plan for our faculty, staff, our school community around these issues, because that is one of the most important ways to make sure that we are aware of the issues we need to be aware of. And there's already great PD happening right now and we need to expand that. So that was an initial finding. And the second one is that when we think about how we would coordinate this moving forward, we need a combination of centralized leadership or coordination, but also kind of local grassroots coordination. So in our proposal, we need to make sure that we take the set aside that the board approved in the budget and make sure it accounts for both of those. And so that prompted us to come to you with a recommendation of a halftime position because the halftime position would be the centralized leadership portion. They would, and then the rest of the funding would be to fund a number of things. We didn't give you a lot of detail about what those other things were. So I'll just kind of put out some of the pieces. One of them is that it would, yeah, sorry.
I'm sorry. I may have had a mental hiccup, so excuse me if I'm asking you to repeat something that you already said. You said with the equity audit, where we are, it's being rolled out, the findings over a period of time beginning in the fall and through the spring. And I thought I heard you say that summary of two findings thus far, one of them being related to a need for a cohesive professional development plan. And what was the second finding?
The need for the funding to cover both centralized leadership portion, but also local-level leadership.
Okay, so need for leadership and coordination.
Kind of distributed, yes, exactly.
Thank you.
Yep.
And maybe just to clarify, so Elaine is doing the audit, correct?
Yes.
Okay, yes.
And I think the term audit is, you know, we just had our audit report.
Yes.
And it conjures an image of something that's extremely comprehensive. And I think what we heard at our last board meeting is that it's not really an audit in the same sense of our financial audit, but it's a, it's an investigation of where we are.
Absolutely, and.
On a few set of standards, whatever that might be.
Right. And some of our recommendations actually have to do with the fact that that was this year's approach. So I'll kind of get to that in a second.
Okay, thank you.
So in our original proposal, with the non-staff portion of the 95,000, essentially half of it, we would be looking at funding local equity coaches. You know, that's just a term that we were using. But the idea that we knew, we also need local leadership within each of the buildings, that it's not just a single person who can really make this work. So some of the funding would be used to fund local coaches.
Megan, can I just, I'm sorry.
Yep, no, it's okay.
Does that mean that it would be, it would be additional funding for existing staff to take on additional, these additional responsibilities? Or are you talking about hiring outside folks? I'm just wondering.
It's a good question. It would probably be stipends. So it would be existing staff.
Okay.
Yep, because it, we're not looking to earmark enough funds to add positions, but to stipend. People who are interested and have their own level of expertise or interest in this. So that would be that portion. And again, these are just our initial thoughts. The intention actually would be for the coordinator to, to look at this in more depth and think, how much do we dedicate to each thing? There would be a series of things, or an amount of money dedicated to PD, and that would be local and national, being able to send people to places. It may be bringing people into the district to speak to our staff. And it may be materials, books. You know, one of the things that happened this year is a course that was run for teachers. So there's books that we purchased for that course. There, we've established professional reading mini libraries, for lack of a better word, about diversity and equity issues in each of our schools. So those are some examples of materials. To your point, Colleen, there would also be funds in that other amount for continued, perhaps external audit portions. So are there still unanswered questions after this year's look of the small A audit or reflection, whatever we want to call it? Some of these funds could be used to hire externally because we're, it's still a work in progress. And then there would be a portion of dollars that could be dedicated to recruitment issues. We have already, or are already investigating, joining a consortium that looks outside of Vermont with a diversity focus in hiring. So some of the funding would be for that. So those are just some examples. Exactly how the other half of the dollars would be distributed would be up to the director. That was our proposal for the .5. Having heard your discussion last month, last month, last week.
Two weeks ago.
Two weeks ago. It was last month, actually.
It was, yeah.
One month.
Right. One of the conclusion, one of the things that we heard pretty strongly is, this is a big job and this is something that we want to make sure people understand is really important to the district. And can we do that sufficiently in a .5? So in our conversations, the conclusions we came to is, we still believe pretty firmly that if 95,000 is the amount that we need to work within, and having just passed our budget, it is, then we feel pretty strongly that we can't use, we can't do this effectively if we use all of it for a person. But we have heard that it's a big job and we want to make sure people know that we see it as a big job. And so we talked about the ability to make this a .8 position, which is halfway in between the halftime and the full-time. Still allows funding for all the things that I talked about. Less funding, obviously, but we think still a manageable amount of funding. It would, it could potentially require us to look at other funding sources for things like professional development, for recruitment. You know, some of those pieces could be funded in other areas. We have grants that support professional development. So could we use grants to, to make sure we still have enough? So essentially, our recommendation, back to you all, is the same conceptual proposal, but an ability to make that position be as much as .8, which would usually be a standalone position typically, because we don't have very many people hanging around on a .2 contract.
So we just, I just want to make it really clear before we start the conversation that this is, we're not in executive session. This is strictly about position. This has nothing to do with personnels or any of that. So just when we're discussing it, please just focus on the position.
First, I want to say I definitely agree with this position. I'm glad we're moving in that direction. But from a financial perspective, I'm very concerned that this person will fail if they don't have the financial resources to grow the program in the first year. I'm very nervous where, you know, I know we have grants that are very rigid in what we can take that money from, but we also have grants that are more flexible. So I would like to see, prior to voting on this next time, is, you know, a clear amount, clear way to get this other funding. So if you're going to take some money out of recruitment to join a recruiting, or out of HR for recruiting consortium, you know, how much is that and where is HR going to pull that money from? So I want to be able to set this person up for success, whether they're a .5, a .8, or a 1. And I'm really worried that if we're getting down into, into, you know, oh, we can do this, we can't do this, this person won't have the resources that they need. And then we're having a conversation next year of, was this position effective or not?
I think that's fair, but also you should know that we did talk about different sources and it may not be a new grant for professional development, but we do have a budget for professional development. It would be reprioritizing. So given that we're talking about 15 to 18,000 dollars, I don't think, I can tell you whatever. You know, it's a.
Yeah, no.
It's the recommendation of the administration that we could tuck the risk.
Right.
We could make it work with the rest.
Yeah, exactly. We hear you and agree. That's part of why we want to make sure that that is part of what the position is. And we feel confident that even at .8, we could make sure that they have the resources.
I would not ask this for any other position, but this is a brand-new position that I truly believe in, that I don't want to see fail because of financial constraints.
Right, but I'm just saying, I'm not sure. Are you asking me to prove to you that out of $82 million, I can find $2,000 for recruiting?
No, no. I guess what I'd like to see is, okay, we're going, salary's going to cost $75,000 and, you know, we originally planned, I'm making numbers up. We originally planned $50,000 for salary, and the person is going to have $45,000 to develop the program. Now we're going to spend $75,000 on salary, so the person is going to have.
$20,000.
$20,000, yeah, thanks. To grow the program. So I guess what I'm looking for, I know we can find the money, but what's the realistic expectation of what you guys think it's going to be to grow this program? Is it 50,000 or is it 40,000? Is it 16?
Brendan, you weren't, you weren't at the last meeting to have a discussion. I don't know if you had a chance to look at the job or file?
Briefly.
Briefly. There was a lot of hope for what this person could do in their role. And so just with your concern, like as a comparison to your concern about not wanting them to fail because you want to make sure that they have the resources, I know my concern two weeks ago was, I don't want them to fail because we're asking to, asking them to do too much in too little of time. Like if we're only having them do a halftime position, I mean, it's, it's all the things we want to have happen. I think everyone can agree, it's like the list of, yeah, this would be amazing if this could all happen. But I know I personally, and I can't speak for anyone else, but had a concern about we would be setting this person up to fail because we wouldn't be giving them enough time.
I agree with everything that you said, and I just want to make sure that we're going into this looking.
No, and I think, I think it's a totally valid concern.
So one quick answer and then kind of another, another reason why we're looking at it this way. The quick answer is, just from a, what's left with the two different models? So there's about, just under $50,000 available if it's a halftime position, right? Because that's half of 95. And then a .8, if you carve out the salary for a .8 position, you're left with about $20,000. So $20,000 is what would be distributed for all those other things that I shared, some of which particularly the PD and the recruitment part could be funded through existing grants. So I don't, I don't know that, that's probably not the level of detail that you're looking at, but that's kind of the magnitude of the difference in models. And the, just one more quick thing. The second part of this is that it is actually our intention that one of the things this position would do, through what they learn next year, through the potential for additional external audits, would be to come back to us during budget season next year with more finite recommendation, which could be increase it to 1.0 and have a body of funding. Very well, that could be the outcome. And we think that this just gives us time and ability to do that really thoughtfully. So there would be an opportunity. We don't think we would lose anything with this proposal, knowing that they might come back to us with the ability to then put, I don't want to assume that it's additional, but it could be additional funding into the budget for the following year.
Just briefly, you don't need to respond, but I'd like to hear more at some point about reprioritizing existing funding. I heard that phrase, and I'm just curious what that would mean. I don't need an answer right now, but I would be interested in what administrators have to say about that. And Angela wanted to say something, as long as I got the camera over in this direction.
Two thoughts, and they're not, well, maybe they're related. But Brendan, your use of the word grow, allow the program to grow, made me wonder if, are we starting, are we introducing this position, working on the assumption that it would become a program that grows, you know?
I personally expect next year, at the end of the year, we're going to invest more in this. And I think that we need the opportunity, if good ideas are presented or things that come up with a brand-new position, somebody thinking that way we've never thought before, that this is a program that grows. Now, when I say grow, it doesn't mean by people, doesn't mean by, I don't know what it means. Grow is a very general statement.
Yeah, and it just made me wonder that, like, are we talking about, are we maybe, does the administration imagine, and do we all imagine, starting at this point and growing to a place where this person in this .8 or .5 or whatever eventual 1.0 then has a staff? You know, like, I'm curious about the trajectory of this position.
Well, in terms of has a staff, I don't know about that. We talked though about local, local coaches. So if you consider that a staff, they wouldn't really supervise them. But I tend to agree that it is likely that we will come in the budget next year with, I mean, I don't want to, I don't, I want to assume that it will be more, but I would anticipate that this person would come to us with some important findings that require budget investment. So if that's an answer for growth, I think that's probably a fair assumption. We just want to be really thoughtful about what that will be.
And when you talk about the local, the, sadly, the word tentacles just came to mind. Now I'm got like a Medusa doing this job. But, you know, the building people.
Coaches.
The stipended, building coaches, thank you. I'm curious, how big a pool is there to draw from for those sorts of positions? You know, how many people are currently working at less than a 1.0 who might be interested in these stipended positions? Or would it be people who are already 1.0 and volunteer, I mean, volunteering to be paid to do more work?
It, well, it could be both of those. It wouldn't be dependent, you wouldn't need to be a part-time employee to be able to take on a stipend. In fact, many of our 1.0 professionals take on various, you know, mentor stipend or.
Coaching.
Coaching, yeah, exactly. So it would certainly be, it doesn't, there's actually a pretty big pool. And I would say it's going to be people who raise their hands because they're passionate about this, because they've pursued coursework and are really interested in being, you know, colleague-to-colleague coaches.
Is it comparable to any current models that we have? Perhaps another way to look at it?
Mentoring, mentoring is a good example. I mean, mentoring is contract specified in terms of the amount, but, and potentially extracurricular coaches to some extent, except they're coaching kids, these would be coaching adults. Ray, I think.
We've talked a lot about this. I've looked into it thoroughly. And as far as I can aware of, nobody has told me why we need this person. We're at, supposedly, there's some sort of equity audit out there, which we haven't seen.
So.
And we've got a list of things here. Yeah, okay. I mean, it's a lot of talk about equity, whatever that means.
So, so after our retreat in May last year, when the board had their meeting in June, there was, the board expressed a desire to look at equity, diversity, inclusion in our schools because we had, sort of to your point, we had no real baseline of where we stood as a district. And so we asked the administration to do an equity audit, which is in the process of being done. We, you haven't missed anything because it hasn't really come out yet. It'll be there for the May retreat. But in doing the audit, my understanding is the administration has, has looked at some of the things that they have found. And in order to position us so that we can hit the ground running, they would like to, they're proposing a position to act as a coordinator to get this program started. That's what, that is what's being proposed.
And we have no idea why we need this program.
Well, I think that there are probably a lot of examples that could be anecdotal examples, and probably, Ray, the best one to give you would be what we saw last spring here at CBU.
Okay, got this off because his girlfriend dumped him and he wrote naughty words on the bathroom wall.
Well, I think it's a, I think it became a little bit bigger than that. And I do think that it's not just a, it's just not, it's not an ethnic issue, it's not a sexual orientation issue, it's not a low SES issue, it's all of those issues combined. And I think as a board, we want to know what our baseline is. Knowing, I think all of us would say, we know it's, we know we're not perfect, we know we have issues, we just don't know the extent of the issues. And I'm trusting the administration, since they know our system so well, to kind of have a sense of the scope. There's a lead team that meets every month that is addressing, that's working on this equity audit. So we're getting input from all of the buildings. And my guess is if the administration didn't think that this was an area that we needed to focus on, they wouldn't be coming to us with a request for this, this position.
Sort of taking their word for it, not that I don't doubt their competence or anything, but.
Right. Ray has a point, we want to see data. I think the entire board has requested to see some kind of data, like, you know, what are the incidences, you know, what are some numbers of incidences reported to administrators and so forth? I think that would be useful for the board to see, not individual cases of anything, but just overall, what is the picture of the school. I know Russ has something to say too, but I just want to, you know, one thing about our 98% white European population, our kids, for the most part, are going to be living in a world that looks a whole lot more diverse than this community that they're living in right now. So from my perspective, I think we have an obligation to help kids have a better understanding of the world and the communities that they'll be moving into. And we don't have to look at just the negative pieces of it. To me, this is an affirming piece of curriculum that we really need to, we owe it to our kids to help them better understand the world.
Okay, who hasn't spoken? I'm, I'll get back to you, Brendan, I promise. But Jeff, and then Jocelyn, and then Barbara, sorry. Well, we'll just go down the line. You can start, Jeff.
Just, I want to, just to, your point, Colleen.
Just, I want to, just to, uh, your point, Colleen. Um, you know, when I think about, um, all that goes on in a typical school day in this district, um, there are so many things going on that so many, that all of our staff, from central office down to all of the people who are keeping our buildings clean, there are so many things going on in the course of the day. And so, I think what, um, I believe is just a reality is that not everything can get accounted for or can be done in the fashion that we most might want. And one of those things is that I do not believe that, um, I don't know the data is being collected on incidents as they occur. Um, and being fed uniformly from each school location, um, up to, whether it's Elaine or, or another one of our administrators, in such a fashion that we really have a good picture of that.
Right, you're not going to see the micro expressions show up in any data report, you know, it's whatever for you.
Right, but I, but I think that we should, as you already pointed out, and I, I strongly agree with this, we're not looking for the, we're not wanting to go deeply into the weeds, but we are wanting to have a sense of, um, where are there problems and issues? Um, and when there's racial bias, when there's religious bias, when there is bias and it's being acted out from one or more students toward other students, I think that that's, that's data that should be collected and should be monitored over time. And, and I think that that's one of the many things that this person, um, could be really rigorously helping with. Um, I also think, I mean, your question, Ray, is a really good question. I think it's the question that has to be asked every time we're thinking about a new position, because we know it's burden, it's a burden on the taxpayer.
It is.
Um, and I, and I think it, it probably warrants more discussion, um, at additional meetings. But the few things that I think about right off the top, not in any particular order, but when, when we look at our district, um, and again, to Colleen's point, we're, part of our mission, and I know we're all in agreement with this, but is that we're going to prepare our students to, to be able to go into the world and function, I don't want to overuse this word, but really robustly. And to do that, there's a lot of information that they need to have about the diversity that this world is. We don't live in, in that level. And, and in a way, we're handicapped, because we don't. Um, and we need to see what we can do, so. And it starts, I think, with staffing. I think that we, we have a lot of work to do to increase, um, amongst our staff, um, to have more minority individuals, um, in our, in our ranks. I really feel like that's important. And I think that this person could help, um, not only help Mark in that process, but also help, it's a, it's a big job. And I, I think that they could, could bring an expertise that could be helpful in, in our hiring practices. I think that in curriculum, as we're teaching students about the wider world, there's a, there's a lot of infusing of information and resources. And there's, there's a lot of things out there that can be tapped into, but teachers don't always have, um, uh, the time necessarily to do that or know about certain resources. I think that this person could be offering a lot of links to, to resources, to infuse our curriculum, to be more diverse, more equitable. Um, we do have incidents that come up. I think this person could be central in helping in those incidents, being a consultant, working with administrators, with teachers, with the students themselves. Because right now, I don't, to the best of my knowledge, and I'm happy to be corrected, but if we have a student who, um, commits and act against another student, um, often the go-to is to suspend that student or there's some kind of punitive action. But that doesn't, what does that do really to change the thinking and the, the mindset of that student? Instead, it would be helpful if we had some kind of structured remedial program for that student to be able to walk through, to really be looking at other ideas, other possibilities in the world.
Isn't that why we have guidance counselors?
I don't know that our guidance counselors in our high school, I, I don't know that they have the time to do that.
So, they don't think it's important?
No, I don't thi- I think they're charged with so many responsibilities that.
If it was important, they would have time to do it.
So, I, we could, we could have that conversation. I, I, I think that it's, I, I think we don't have the structure of that kind of programming, not just in our high schools, but in our elementary and middle schools as well. I think, I think that can be added. I think the training component, when we keep talking about the importance of professional development, and we know that that's, that that's so important, because I feel like this person could be doing some of that training himself or herself directly. And I think that having, being in that position will build those relationships out in all of the schools and will see, that will help centralize, see that person as a, as an expert in this field, if, if they're doing the training themselves, which also means that we wouldn't be paying for that training in addition. We would probably, I'm sure, augment the professional development training, but I think that this person could be doing some of that. Um, and, and those are just a few of the things. So, it, it seems to me, we need to have more discussion about, about this, as far as what this person could be doing, but that goes to my second point and then I'll finish, I'm sorry. Because I'm thinking about what Brendan asked initially, which was, um, how are we going to know whether or not the person in this position was effective, let's say, at the end of year one? And I think that that falls back onto, um, the responsibilities that we, not us, but that are assigned to this individual. And, um, I got out of this for some reason. And as I look at the job description, um, you know, a couple of things stand out. I still feel like this job description is very, is, is, I think there's too much in the job description. Because my fear is that if this person is then assessed against all of the responsibilities of this job description as it stands, that, that they will not be deemed as successful. I, I would just like to suggest that maybe there be continued thought about maybe prioritizing three or four items in this, in this list of responsibilities. And maybe those items would be the FOKI for the first year, um, or however you do that. But it feels to me like there needs to be some prioritization. My final thought about this, because then I think we would have something concrete that we could say at end of year one, okay, we've got, we have these three expectations or these four expectations, has any progress been made in these areas? Um, and it would, hopefully, those would be realistic, um, expectations. The final thought that I have is that this, this, um, the start of the job description speaks to the idea of collaborating and partnering with CBD administration and school leaders. And, and I do think that there also needs to be some thought given to, how is this person going to be positioned? Um, would they be seen as, as one, as a senior administrator? As, as one, as, as somebody who really has some authority in this work? Um, I, I, I don't know that it's structured this way or not. There's an article, um, that I meant to get out to Lynn, um, but I think would be good for everyone that I will, uh, send out to folks. It's in, um, Education Week. It was actually in October of last year. Uh, and it's called "The Challenging, Often Isolating Work of School District Chief Equity Officers." And it talks a lot about the fact that if the individual is not strongly enough positioned and really seen as the person who's in, who has a lot of responsibility and charge for this position, then it can be, they can be hampered moving out of the gate, that they can be seen as sort of a secondary force. And it just might be an interesting, uh, article to, to think about, because, um, it really points out some of the benefits, depending upon how things are structured for this job, and also some of the challenges. And, and overall, how, how, how strongly positioned will this, will this person be in this job? So, sorry, thanks for letting me take all this time.
That's really helpful, um, for sure. Uh, two quick things related to those last two pieces. One of them, in terms of the job description, um, for one thing, we, that draft is sort of a, almost like a everything-but-the-kitchen-sink version of what this could be, that we wanted to pull together so you would have some sense of what we were thinking, not intending, because I would agree, it's an enormous job. We have not had the chance to do exactly what you just said, which is key, which is to go through and say, of everything-but-the-kitchen-sink, what is really important for us right now in this position? So, that's the first thing. Um, and the second, the second piece is, our current proposal has this position not an admin position. Um, that's how we've structured the fund, or that's how we analyze the funding against the ninety-five. It's really positioned not as an administrative position, but as more of a district coach position, so a professional-level position. Um, and that, that's partially, and I would love to see the article as well, I think that would be helpful. Um, we definitely agree that it, I think our position is we can still situate, situate coaches to have the kind of impact and authority. No, they wouldn't have supervisory authority.
Right.
That would be the job of the principals or the special ed directors. Uh, their job would be to inform those people. So, just so that it's clear, the current recommendation, it's not an admin position. It's a staff position.
Is it, how is it similar to like the literacy coordinator that we have now?
That's the example I was going to give. It is very similar to Jenza Bushy, who is the district literacy leader, who works, uh, simultaneously with principals, but also with, uh, staff, teachers, you know, coaching that part, so.
And she, she's considered the authority, like she is the one that's responsible for, okay?
Correct. And again, too, that doesn't, part of the person's job would be to make recommendations. It, it doesn't mean that in some period of time, we might discover that, that it needs to be a different level of position. But that's what the current proposal has, so.
Can I?
We're going down that line.
It's related directly to that last point, should I still hold it?
Go ahead.
To Jeff's point.
She'll yield, twenty seconds.
Just makes me think that, um, I know it's, it's different if we're considering a point eight versus point five. Um, but it certainly makes me feel even stronger about the fact that I don't think this person is, in, in this first year or maybe ever should have, also have a position in one of the schools.
You want, you, whether it's point five or point eight, it should be this whole, one bucket?
More of a district.
Of one point oh.
Even if it's a point eight, you know, I, I, and like you said, not very many people are looking for a point two position. Anyway, but it makes me think, just, because positioning is so important and.
But we can't get lost in a, as the board. I think we're, we're stepping beyond our boundaries right now, a little bit, as far as like the, uh, shaping of the exact position. I think that we can give direction in the sense of, uh, the question that you posed, Jeff, how do we know, I think it, you said, how do we know at the end of the year? Or somebody said, how do we know at the end of the year if someone's been successful? And that's our job to ask our administrators, hold our administrators accountable. Um, because if there's someone with a, a coordination expertise, um, you know, they've got the expertise in the community on this particular topic, if leadership does not prioritize this in their own agenda, then someone's doomed to failure. There's no question. But if it's a leadership priority, that this is an important role, then whoever gets hired in whatever this position is will have the backing of leadership. And then the board's responsibility is to ask administrators, report out to us and hold our administrator, you know, our superintendent, we don't talk to principals, but our superintendent, that would be part of the charge. So, that would be a way to have, you know, it's not an administrative position, but it's an expertise position within the community and holding the superintendent accountable for supporting that person in that role.
Sure, but I think as, as long as you're introducing something, you might as well do it in a, you know, you should consider the message that goes along, you know, in any organization. Just occurs to me that you should introduce a position like this in this, sort of in the strongest way possible, if this is a priority, if it's a true priority.
But a leadership, but, you know, we're getting caught up with licensure issues when you start talking about an administrator position, that's why I'm just saying.
I'm not advocating for this position to be an administrative position, no.
Oh, okay. That was my point, is that we don't want to get lost in what could be a licensure issue.
Oh, yeah, no, I'm not talking about any of that. I'm just saying, I would hate for this position to be perceived by anyone as a sort of side gig or an afterthought.
Point taken. Barbara?
Yeah, so, first, I'd like to thank the administration for going back and revisiting that, you know, initial proposal, the point five. Um, my only ask or question right now is, would you force, and maybe this is for Mark, would you foresee issues, um, hiring or getting the right resource, um, for a point five compared to point eight or point oh-one? I mean, would there be issues getting the right person for that?
Uh, let me say there are issues hiring people right now, period. Uh, because we are in a sort of a full employment situation. Um, I, you know, point five, point eight, one point oh, I, obviously, people would rather, in most instances, would rather have a full-time job. That's, I think that's pretty clear. But I think a point eight is not hard to hire. That's four days a week, works out to four full days. Um, and halftime, um, presents a certain opportunity, um, to do, you know, if, within the district, to do two different jobs, if you're interested in doing that sort of thing. Um, doing halftime, uh, in sort of this position and halftime in a different position. So, I guess my, my short answer is, it's difficult to hire, but I think we could hire whatever we really needed, and I think we could find a quality person.
I mean, the reason I brought that up is because, you know, we don't want to, even though we, you know, we okay the position and we put ourselves in a bind where we know, hi, it's going to be so hard to get a point five with a good, with the right skills we need. Because we want to hire the right person for this role.
I agree.
Uh, we don't want to be coming back next year and maybe, again, they failed for different reasons. Maybe they didn't have enough time or whatever it is. Um, so that's, how would you look?
You don't need to yell to me, if you have anything else to say.
Nope, not now. I'm coming back.
Um, I just, two quick things. Um, the first thing, going back, um, first to what Ray was saying and then Colleen's response. I agree with Colleen that, um, I'm, I'm a numbers person. I really like to see reports, I like to see things. Um, but then going back to Jeff's point, I think that there's a lot of things that don't get recorded, um, get reported or like are recorded. So, for any kind of report that we got, I would love to see if we could find some comparable literature that lets us know, usually we find that when X number is reported, that in reality, it's probably closer to this. Um, and then, uh, going off of that, I just keep going back to the spring. So, I'm a white woman with white children in our schools, but I couldn't help but be moved, sitting here, listening to countless students tell us about their experiences in the school. Um, and so, although we don't have any kind of actual report in our hands yet, I think that it's pretty safe to say that if those students were brave enough to come and speak here, there are probably other students who maybe didn't feel like they had a voice at the time, and that was only from one school. Um, and then, the only other thing I, I wondered about, and this is just my, going back to budget, is if we're hoping that this position will be, the person who's in this position will be able to start making recommendations for the following year. We're really only giving them September, October, and maybe a little bit of November. Um, so I'm, just throwing that out there is that that's just going to be, that, so a lot, it might be very heavy at the beginning that they're focusing on, you know, their assessment of what is needed, um, just knowing that we're probably not hiring before the fall, like, someone's not going to start before the fall. So, just throwing that out there for us to be chewing on. Um, and I would love to have some kind of, um, other audit outside of ourselves, just because I trust our administration, I know our administration really knows what's going on. But there's always, when you're so close to the, to the details, sometimes it's, it's hard to actually see everything and it's nice to get a fresh perspective sometimes, might get something that we didn't even think about. Um, so, yeah.
You actually brought up a, a question I, I had a while ago, and it's for Mark. So, at a point five or a point eight coordinator position, that follows the school year calendar? So, there's no summer work? That would, that would have to be stipended if it was, okay, thanks.
And, um, I, I think you're absolutely right around the time, budget decisions never come at the right time.
And that's just what happens for us every year about many things. So, it's just something we need to be thinking about.
Right, but part of this proposal is also because we don't want to wait another entire year.
I absolutely understand that.
Yeah, the other thing that I also wanted to share around the, regardless of whether that we land on a point eight or a point five, we will post and look for the best candidate. And it, and either a point eight or a point five might have another gig, either in here or externally. I mean, if, so I don't, I would want to make sure the board knew that, uh, you know, because you talked a lot about having a foot in two different things. Um, but that would kind of be up to the candidate who applies. You know, many part-time people do part-time something and part-time something else that could be in here, but we wouldn't even be able to control if that was outside of here. So, I, I just want to, to. was outside of here. So I, I just wanna, to us, we'd hire the best candidate. What they might do with the other part of their job, that wouldn't really get in our way.
Would that factor into the decision of what makes them the best candidate?
No, I don't think so. Yeah.
Colleen?
Because we're having this discussion because the board, in our policy or protocol, we've asked for any newly created positions to come back to the board. I, I would advocate for this position to be a 1.0 FTE and ask administrators to consider how they could reprioritize some of our other funding sources, such as professional development, if there are activities that would come out of, you know, likely activities that might be recommended. A person coming into this position, I think it's, from what I've seen in other districts, it's very intense, and I'd like for somebody to be able to devote full-time to this particular role. And I compare it to other positions in the district. If we think of a school resource officer, a few years ago, we did not even cross our minds that we would have a school resource officer on our payroll. And what I've heard from administrators, and I'm, I'm looking forward to having a, a report out on how it's going, but what I hear is that it is, that's a full-time position, and that it's useful. I just, I feel that this particular role that we're creating and the laundry list of all the activities, even if there are three items that are prioritized, it's a very big job. It's very relational. They have to spend a lot of time developing relationships with people that can be emotionally draining, time-consuming, and that's not even getting to identifying professional development. That's almost the easy part. The hard part is beginning to develop the relationships. So I would advocate that our board support a 1.0 FTE.
I just remind the board that I already have $150,000 go-get that I haven't solved yet, so adding that $50,000 is problematic.
Is there, would there be anything stopping us in November, putting, like, asking to, like, I don't know, move some of our fund balance or something else into our, our current budget, or is that not something that could be done?
All, all fund balance really is, is a deficit spending. So you could, yes, you could say, we plan to deficit spend $725,000, and we authorize the superintendent to deficit spend another 50. That's sort of what you would be doing.
Can we, but before we move on to other questions, can I just confirm if I have this correctly? We have a $95,000 allocation for this particular content area, and we're talking about a 10-month-year, 10-month position, right? It's not a 12-month position.
Correct, that's right.
So that 95 would cover a 10-month position.
It, it is the number that we use, Mark, you want it?
So if the, if the standard number, you say $95,000 is salary and benefits for a full-time, I'm calling this a teaching position, coordinator position, it's, it's under the same contract.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that.
I, I think what Jean is, is pointing out is, then we're, if we're going to give that person other resources, that extra pot of money is going on top of $150,000 kind of go-get that we're looking at already, so.
Right, and just to reinforce that.
This is all part of what we discussed and landed on, if the, if the desire and the recommendation, which was this $95,000, we, we would not be able to do what we think is the right approach within the 95 if this position was at 1.0. It's why, it's why our recommendation is a hybrid, and it, it would be seeking additional funding that is not budgeted.
So, how, you know, well, fully stating that if it's the wall of the board.
Correct.
I have just three quick comments I want to make. One, I'm getting nervous because administration originally came to us with a .5, and now we're pushing for a .8. Two, or a 1.0. Two, if we are, there's not a lot of fluff in the budget. So if we're gonna say we're gonna invest $95,000 in the salary and benefit for this person, if we take from different areas to give this person resources, those other areas aren't gonna be able to do what we fully planned for them. Secondly, from the fund balance, that has ripple effects down the road, because if we take too much from the fund balance, eventually we're gonna get to $1 million, and we're not gonna be able to take from that fund balance anymore, and we're gonna have a, a substantial tax hike at any given time. So I think that, you, you know, whether or not this is a 1 FTE position or not, or a .5 or .8, i- in my opinion, just saying, okay, go get money from the fund balance, or go get money from under here, over here, something's gonna give. Something's not gonna be whole if we're doing that.
Can I just clarify that? We're making assumptions about purchasing certain, you know, like books or whatever it is. You know, we're making assumptions about what this person would need, and it might be that, within what we already have, someone could work with those resources. This is a very relational type of position. It's not creating widgets, it's creating relationships and community. And that doesn't cost money, it costs time and expertise.
Yeah, I just would come back to trusting, I, I think the administration is probably looking at this, we need to walk before we run with this. There's gonna be a lot of learning going on in the first year of, of this position, of this program, however you want to describe it. You know, a couple of people have said, you know, we, we don't want to see it fail after the first year. It's gonna take two or three years to understand, you know, is this working? Is this accomplishing the goals that we have for it? So it, it's a, you know, I, I think we want to take a little bit longer time, you know, view of this. And, and, you know, a point that I made in the last discussion, I'll, I'll repeat it again, is that, you know, however we slice up that $95,000, there is a significant chunk of it that, you know, is, is gonna be spent on the local coaches, local efforts, building efforts, however you want to describe that. And if we say, well, we're gonna shift a chunk of that to paying for this position, then I think you are, you know, kind of handicapping that person, and, you know, they're, they're not gonna have the resources at the local level to make the program effective. So it, it's, anything that you're asking, we're asking the administration to spend on, you know, kind of the position over and above the half that's already there, you do need to look at that as incremental to the 95 that's there, because I don't think you can pull it from the, the local effort that, that they've described.
Ray, did you?
I guess I just have very high expectations for our, our staff, and that it seems to me it's up to the teachers to make sure that what goes on in their classroom, that they are aware of implicit, explicit biases, that they are making sure that the students are feeling, are included in all the activities, and any clashes between students are, are appropriately dealt with. And I have the, they need to, you know, if they need to implement Act One, that they have a responsibility as professionals to, you choose their professional development to, to, to do that. And I also feel that it's up to then the principals to make sure that the teachers are doing this. And it's up to our superintendent to make sure the principals are doing what they're supposed to be doing. And I have a feeling that as we create this job, the work is gonna expand to fill whatever job we create. And I'm also scared that it's gonna get bigger and bigger and bigger and bigger.
I'd like to comment on these. So, so one thing, at least from my experience, most of these issues that the kids encounter, they're not in class when there is somebody. They are usually in spaces where there is no adult, or, you know, where the kid feels like they have, you know, more power than the others. So usually, at least from my experience, I don't know how it is here in high school, but at least from the kid to eight.
Yes.
That's what, yeah.
And the teacher should be out in the hallways in between classes. And the principal should be out in the hallways in between classes. And if they're not out there, why not?
And, and Ray, to your point, I think in a perfect world, if we, if we like lived in a utopian society, I think that's exactly what would happen. I think our teachers would have all the skills that would, they would need, they'd have their eyes and ears everywhere. They, actually, they probably wouldn't even have to have their eyes and ears everywhere, because kiddos would know from an early age what's appropriate, how to respect people, how to, how to treat people like they're human beings. However, it's the same reason why we have a literacy coach, it's the same reason we have math coaches, it's the same reason people come to these jobs with cer- certain experiences, with certain training, and not everyone comes. The, the, I don't, I don't even know if we have anyone on our staff who is like the perfect, you know, the perfect teacher. And so I, I get, I get your point, and I, I think having high standards for our teachers absolutely makes sense. But at the same time, I think that, that they also need to be supported. They need, they need support, they need training, they need someone whose expertise it is. I, I mean, I don't know if I'm a seventh grade math teacher, if I have all the expertise to, for, to meet all of my kiddo's needs that have special education needs or social, emotional needs. Like, I need support to meet those needs. And I, I think that, I think when it comes to equity and to race and to sexuality and, and to all of it, I think that we need to have extra support there. And, and Brennan, to your point about not going to the fund balance and pulling money here and there, I, I absolutely agree with you. However, and maybe there's other things that other people would say they think is the most important, I just think that this position, this program, whatever it blossoms to become, is one of the most critical things that we are gonna do for the foreseeable future. And so if it's that we need to take $20,000 from somewhere, I, I think we need to figure it out. Like, I, so that's the only reason I mentioned the fund balance. I would not normally, normally I would just say it's just something we're waiting off for another year. So just, just to put that comment out there.
I, I, I want to kind of get us, you know, we could probably talk about this for 10 hours, and I kind of want to, if we're gonna act on this in, in two weeks, I, I want to make sure we're kind of coming to some type of consensus. But before we do that, I just, I want to be really careful. It is the board's job to approve new positions and new, new programs based on the recommendation of the administration who have gone through a process. And I think having a healthy debate is really important. I learned really early on in my school board experience, when I came in and I was sure I knew the right math program for Charlotte Central School. And we had long contentious school board meetings, because we had all the, talk about doing research. I had all the research. This was how, this was the best math program in the world. And I spent hours trying to convince the administration that this was the thing to do. Well, you know what? I am not a teacher, I am not a superintendent, I am not a principal. I'm just a mom who cares deeply about the education, educational experience of my kids. And I learned that part of being a mom was realizing where my expertise ended, and where I had to trust the judgment of the professionals. As a physical therapist, I don't think, no, no offense, I hope taken, but I, I really don't want you telling me how to treat patients. I can't tell you that this would be, this should be the highest priority for the school, because frankly, we don't have data that says that our kids are doing great in math and great in science and great in, in early literacy. I think there are a lot of competing priorities, and that's our administration's job, is to look at all of these priorities, look at the bucket of money that we have given them, hear our concerns, and come back to us with a plan that is able to meet all of those priorities. So I, I feel very strongly that if we start trying to say, no, you know, we don't want to focus on, we have a literacy coordinator, but we, we need to take money from literacy because we really want to focus on, on equity, it makes me really uncomfortable, because that's not my area of expertise. What I, what I can do is I can ask lots of questions until I'm satisfied that, that, that the administration does have, has hurt us and has the best interest of, of all of our kids at heart. So what I, what I want to kind of bring, that's, so that, that was my, my board member piece. Hold on.
As, as board chair, I understand you have the floor as long as you want it, but I, I just, I wanted to, I want to take offense of, I, I want to be careful that what we're saying, some of us are saying that this is really important, and we're concerned that a .5 or a .8 is, is insufficient for the gravity of the position. And I think we're making that point. Some of us are really trying to emphasize that point. And I don't think we're saying we're coming at it with particular areas of expertise, and I think we could all argue that we have different areas of expertise. I want to make the point, you know, I'm stepping forward and saying, I think this is so important, and I want administrators to hear from me as one of the 12 board members, and it's just me, and other board members certainly have other opinions, but I think this is so critical, so important, that I'm willing to support pulling money from someplace else, or reprioritizing, I, I heard that term. But I think we're, I think some of us want to just really make sure administrators are hearing, we want to support whoever might be hired, and that a .8, .5 might be insufficient for somebody, because they'd be pulled in other directions. And so our concern is that we want to create success, a successful space for somebody. And I'm not trying to tell administrators what to do. I do want administrators to hear that, for me, it's a priority.
And, and I appreciate that our administration has come back after that last meeting and, and hurt us, and has come back with an increase.
Right, and we could just, you know, do a straw pull around the table.
Well, we're getting there, you interrupted me, so I couldn't get to that point yet, so.
Can I just make one comment?
Yeah.
I will say that, this is just feedback and, this is just feedback for the future. So when I hear that we're having an equity audit, I tru- I truly believe that it was similar to having like a, the food service audit. I thought that there was an outside, I thought there was an outside entity that was auditing us. So when, when we were told that there was a recommendation of $95,000, I was thinking that that was coming from like an outside source. Like, I, I wish before we had ever approved the budget, had ever talked about number, the number of $95,000, that we had maybe had this conver- conversation, because I think it would have saved us going kind of around and around, and that we would have said, maybe at that point, we would have said, you know, one of us, two of us, three, whoever feels strongly that, you know, maybe it does make sense for it to be a 1.0, knowing that we also want this. I mean, we are where we are right now. But I, I was, I, I actually was a little shocked two weeks ago when we were sitting there, and Elaine had said that she had been the one who was, you know, doing this in, not in, in, I don't think informal is the right word, but that she was doing an assessment. I, I truly just, and it, it might be shame on me. I didn't, I, I didn't ask, like, I didn't explicitly ask. I made an assumption, you know.
I think actually in one of the early COLT reports, Elaine outlined all the components of the audit. She explained the audit that she was doing, and outlined all the components that were gonna be included in that.
I thought that was coming from, I thought that that was coming from.
I have a spare exact moment, like, oh, can I read the COLT report?
I do, too.
Oh, it's an internal audit.
Interesting. And in that way, like, in, I feel like we, I feel like the board is at a disadvantage in this conversation, because we are missing a whole lot of information, and we are being asked to just trust. And we are asked to trust a lot, and we do, and we should, and there's an incredible track record, but it feels a little bit like a setup to, and I don't mean that in, it's like, to know that there's actually been someone doing this job for this school year is a little strange, that we're having this conversation now.
I want to jump in on a couple of things. First of all, and we talked about this during the budget process, part of the reason for putting in the $95,000 is so we don't kick the can down the road for another year. Because regardless of who's doing the audit, and we hear you about that piece and the misunderstanding about who, that, that's a point well taken. But regardless of whether it was internal or external, it's not delivered in full until the end of the year, past budget season. So our recommendation to this board was, something's gonna come out of that audit that requires us to take action. If we want to be able to take action next year, we need to set money aside. That's why we made that recommendation, knowing that we don't have that, and we wouldn't. So it, it could be the will of the board that we don't do anything for next year, that we don't, that we, that we use the $95,000 to do continued audits, right? Like, our...
to do continued audits, right? Like, our recommendation is not that, but that could be what the board tells us. So so I want to respond to that piece. And, you know, in terms of the the help me with the second part of what you said.
Being at a disadvantage in the conversation, like, or.
Oh, somebody already on.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, no, that was it. Someone already on staff doing this work. We don't have a diversity and equity coordinator. We have a staff person engaged in a special project related to diversity and equity because of that person's individual expertise, who has delivered coursework, very impressive coursework, and who has worked on the professional development. And we have used some of that expertise and that person's findings to inform this. But I just want to be clear, we don't have someone in this position right now. So, you know, that's that. And that's why this is a discussion and not an action. And, you know, we are hearing it. But that is why we have what that is why this is a recommendation that is that our belief gives us the ability to both move the work forward, because we know right now that this professional development and this coordination piece is necessary. We don't need to wait till the end of the audit to know that. And that we can move that forward with some of this work. And we also know that this person will discover more things. We'll know more things in June than we know now because the rest of the audit will come out. So that that's why that's why you're here. Because the alternative really would be that we wait till the end of this year, that we absorb the results of what we've learned, we find out what we don't know, and and, you know, access some external people. Our our thinking is that that will be part of the work. But that's the alternative. That's what the board is is facing is waiting altogether.
So is there a consensus on the board that, well, let's start right there. It's an easy place to start. Is there a consensus on the board that they would like to see a position in place for next year? Are we in agreement on on that?
Yes.
Okay, that was the easy part.
I flipped it off of what Maggie was saying.
I didn't mean to make you more conflicted. It's our recommendation that we have something just there. But I just wanted to.
Explain why it's this.
Is there is there is there any support to approve a position that is point five?
I support what the administration is recommending. If ultimately, they came and said, you know, if we really do want it to be point eight and we'll find extra money, great. I am supportive of whatever the administration wants to do here. And it may, you know, be extern, you know, that we have to spend money with an outside consultant at some point, but they'll get us there. That's the way I'm looking at it. So it's not explicitly point five. It's.
Ken?
Yeah, and I just echo what Russ just said.
Brendan, what did you say?
I support a point five.
You support a point five.
And I have one question that I think we've not yet touched on. So when we're thinking about what if it were to be a point eight, and we paid this person, it sounds like 75,000?
That would be, that's the estimate.
Estimate, right.
95 is what that number is.
Right, because we don't know who will hire what.
Correct.
Right. And that and does does that include benefits as well?
Yes.
Okay. And and also, do we have, because the other thing I'm just wondering about is, and I don't know that we would have this yet, I don't have that expectation, but would it be helpful to have some market data in terms of these positions are unique? I'm just wondering if we knew that we could hire a 1.0, for example, for 75,000, including benefits, would that change our the tenor of our conversation?
Excuse me. I think that the 95 is the placeholder figure for salary and benefits for a 1.0 FTE. And sometimes we hire people for less than that, and sometimes we hire people for more than that. So just as a as a correction, a 1.0 FTE, the assumption is that under the teacher's contract, that position is going to run us 95 grand for salary and benefits. Benefits are probably, what, a third, maybe 40% now with the way health insurance costs are going up.
It's less than that, but yeah.
Yeah. So the night because of because it's on the teacher contract scale, that's that's a pretty.
So what what is the the Benny's piece of it for a full time?
Like 20-ish?
20 percentish or 20 grandish?
20 grand.
Same thing.
So so the 75 is, you know, might be the the comp, but another 20-odd grand in benefits.
Sometimes we hire higher than some of those.
A little a little further than the middle of our pay scale.
I want I don't want the board to think that that we did have a very robust discussion about how much money I had to find somewhere else. This was not a matter of Elaine saying, I can't do this for point eight, but okay, Jean won't let me spend anymore. I mean, that was not it. These guys did a really thoughtful look at the positions. We do have that or not full time, and the kind of skills we need, and how the job would work with the other schools. And the re- the administrative recommendation from some really good administrators is that this is doable at a point eight. I did not hear, Mark, you're in the room, too. I did not hear, oh, my gosh, if we only had $20,000 more, we would, it would be so much better. I didn't hear that. I heard, this is what the work we're trying to accomplish. This is how we think we can get it done. We think we can do it for within the budget that we've given you and be successful. Successful being, I'm glad you said that, Russ, because successful is anything's better than what we have, right? I mean, we're going to make progress, and we're not going to be 100%. So it's going to be positive. I I just want to throw that out there. I don't think that you should not think that that Elaine is hyper nervous about being make moving the system forward if she with point eight versus 1.0. This is the administrative.
Something Jeff said rang true. These positions are all unique, those that exist, which isn't a ton of them in in Vermont schools. And that first year, yes, we have a job description. And but everything you've said about that job description is true. And things are going to pop out out of this, and and that will become the job as it moves along. And it's probably going to take three years to really fine tune it.
So if the board would come back, so say we say, okay, go go for it. Let's go for point eight. And the person is in three months and says, no, it really needs to be a 1.0. Does that what just remind me the logistics of that, how that happens? Does that hurt? Does that become a new position again, that that person has to reapply for?
We would show that at next year as part of our request for an addition.
Okay.
We would say, we have come to the point where we think point eight should be 1.0 for this coordinated position. And it wouldn't, it wouldn't be part of this discussion. It would be kind of like an old decision packet.
But would that person have to reapply for the job at a 1.0? No? Okay.
Just I was just curious how that process worked. Sorry, Barbara.
Yeah, I was just going to say, because I I'm with Colleen about the one point, but I appreciate the point eight, which I'm willing to go with. But I think it's important to for that candidate, whoever it is, to understand that there would be a possibility that there could be a point one, because, you know, a one point. Because we know, post equity audit, we are going to get, we're going to get more information. And there is no way, I'm sure all of us agree, there is no way that we're going to come back and say, oh, we made a mistake. This should have been a point five, or maybe no even position. So we all know, there is going to be something that needs action on a probably a bigger scale, because we don't have that insight right now in all the schools of what those minor, you know, minor issues that might be impacting our kids on a day-to-day basis. And they could be minor in our eyes, but for that resource who understands what it means, you know, you know, will, you know, can help mitigate those issues. So I think, you know, with a point eight, but, you know, having that clear understanding that there is that possibility, that that could be a one, a one or one point position.
And typically, what happens, someone taking a position like this, and I know I'm speaking out of turn, sorry, but I just want to say this one other piece. When people take on a position in this kind of role in schools, they are so impassioned for the content and the topic. If you say it's a point eight, this whoever this is, is not going to come in at 7:30 and leave at 4 o'clock. This person is going to put their heart and soul into it, is my guess. So we might pay somebody point eight, but I guarantee that person is going to be working 1.0 plus. And is that fair?
Well, I think they're probably, I I think that's the discussion, because I'm sure there we have a lot of teachers who do the same thing, who are working point eight, who.
Absolutely.
I get emails from Bonnie Birdsall in the afternoon on Sundays.
Well, then we know, we know that that's true.
So so am I here? Do is there any further direction that you would like to give to the administration before we vote on this in two weeks?
I want to be sold.
What do we need to do to sell you?
We just need to be sold that we need this position, and it's going to do something.
So maybe like.
I don't want it. That's just, don't answer it now, but.
What's the rationale behind whatever has led to this recommendation in writing?
I think that's useful because it helps set up, how do we evaluate the success of whatever it is? You know, statement of problem, this is our approach, this is how we're going to evaluate in a year, whatever, whatever. But, you know, the three-step process.
Barbara? Oh, sorry.
I have a question maybe for Megan, that why, because we we put this money aside, and initially, it was not necessarily intended for a risk for a position. It was, we're going to cover whatever it needs, maybe professional development, even for our staff, because that's huge, or bring in other sources, or whatever it is. So why do we need the position now, yet we we could use that money still to move forward as we await the May equity audit?
It's a great question. And it and it is because of the portion of the audit that we have looked at, which is the professional development portion, which I think, and I might be wrong on the month, but I think it was in the November.
It was in November.
Okay, so it's in the November report to the board is the summary of it. But what we get, so in the summary, it sort of describes, here's the diversity and equity PD that has happened in the district. Here's the formal versions. Here's the informal versions. Excuse me. And so what emerged pretty quickly is the way we make sure that the teachers and the principals have the tools in their toolbox is to make sure they have the professional development. We know that right out of the gate. So the recommendation of a position is, this is a person that could potentially teach courses. So courses is one way. Coaching is another form of professional development. And calling external PD, too. You could Google diversity and equity PD and get a whole laundry list, and it's not all quality, right? So that's really the rationale for the for the position, because that's a known piece. And then the other pieces we talked about, too, the the recruitment, the local coaching in the buildings, which is a form of professional development that's just a carve-out. So.
Because also, we have to take into consideration that that person, that resource might not even have the expertise to do our coaching. So that's why I was going back to that point eight, because I feel like if we left those funds, not necessarily to bring in other sources, but also to educate this person so that they are prepared for the following years. Because that person, you know, we might not get, you know, that expert that is so skilled that they don't need, they can go by themselves and train. Probably, they're going to also need some professional development based on what they find, you know, when the audit comes out in May.
And opportunity to collaborate with, like, colleagues who are doing the same work. Yeah.
Okay. Anything else? All right. Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Is there a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. And before we adjourn to the next committee or to committee meetings, our next meeting is the 17th here at 17th, at 6 o'clock.
Tuesday.
Two, back to Tuesdays. And and we will have a discuss, we never really discussed if people wanted to change committees at all.
I'm just going to suggest you ask Ken or explain.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And while I leave Ken standing in the middle of the room. So I thought we could do that in on the 17th, because actually, indicators is not meeting tonight. But we have three standing committees that meet on Tuesday nights. Poli- HR, finance, facilities together, and and indicators. And then we have a policy committee and the, is that it? And negotiations, which is comes out of HR, out of the HR committee. So the so I think what it what you did last spring was you kind of went to a couple of the different, you went, did you go to all the committees?
I kind of decided on indicators before I really taste tested any others.
So I think tonight is HR meeting tonight. HR is meeting tonight, and finance is meeting tonight. So you're welcome to just tag in and hear what they're doing with each each committee. I think your meeting's going to be a little longer than your meeting.
Or else go home and question why you did this to begin.
So is this something I choose, or is it a need that I fill, or?
Well, so here's the here's the the kind of the rub with committees. Six people on a committee makes a quorum of the board, which makes it hard, because then a quorum could take action. We have one committee that has six people, and that's the facilities and finance committee.
We don't have six.
Right? Well, tonight, you have five. Is it Kelly?
Yeah.
One, two, three, four.
Four.
Oh, why did it make five? Okay. Well, so, okay, so you have five. So if you had six, that would be a problem.
Too many, right? Unless there's somebody hard to believe who's had enough of fun of money and would like to try something else.
Which which we can, we will discuss in in on the 17th.
HR, you guys have four.
So Dave had been on.
Oh, yeah, Dave.
The HR slash negotiations committee, and he's no longer. But that doesn't mean you necessarily have to take his place on that committee as well. So, you know, that said, we would welcome a new member, especially one who is, you know, relatively new and would offer a fresh perspective, perhaps. And just, you know, kind of looking at succession issues. I've been on it forever. I'm not planning to, you know, run again when my term is up. So having, you know, somebody new to the committee who would be part of this round of negotiations, and then there for the next one, would would be, I think, something that the the board and the, you know, would would benefit from. So there's my pitch for you joining our committee. But there may, you may have other interests. So certainly follow up on those as well.
And then indicators.
Finance needs a lot.
Well, and.
Every year, he promises us drinks.
No, it's not true.
You do every year.
Well, and HR has negotiations.
Yeah.
Association.
HR slash negotiations, you know, when we're actually in negotiations, we need a lot. But, you know, we're not negotiating constantly. We are now, and I expect once we get rolling, hopefully in the next month or so, we'll have a lot of meetings between now and June. But but maybe not.
Anyways, it's your choice to to try out the different committees. We're all equal on, we're all equals. So, you know, we all should have the opportunity to be on a committee that we'd like to be on. So I wish you could, indicators is the best committee. We finally figured out what we were doing after two years.
Guys are so good, you don't even need to meet tonight.
We don't even need to meet tonight. We're looking at defining specific outcomes for our kids and how we're going to measure them. That was kind of the process of the mini retreat. But we're not meeting tonight. So I would invite you to join one of the other groups. If you do finance, I don't think you have to move, because they meet in here.
And if you really do want to check out indicators.
We're meeting March 10.
Yes.
If you want that information.
Yes.
For what time?
And also remind us, I need to warn. Because that one's not warned. It was warned for tonight.
Okay. And I guess we are adjourning to motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any objection? Okay. Thank you.